Okay, thank you everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, April 8th, 2020. This is the regular school committee meeting of the Beverly Public Schools. We are meeting on Zoom. Governor Baker has given us permission to forgo the open meeting rule that requires a majority of the board members be present, physically present, as well as the chair. So we are joined this evening with BevCam. They are broadcasting this meeting on Channel 99, as well as their YouTube channel. We thank BevCam very much. As an alternate, I'm also recording this meeting locally so that we have a backup copy that we can use in case we have any technical difficulties during the broadcast. I thank everyone for joining this evening and keeping their lines on mute. I think that will help dissipate any of the background noise and any of the rebroadcasting of our audio. Thank you also for obtaining headsets. And the convention that seems to have worked in our prior meetings that I'd ask for tonight is that if you do wish to speak or be recognized, that you stick your hand in front of the camera or otherwise indicate, thank you Mayor Cahill, otherwise indicate so that we don't leave anyone out of the conversation that wishes to speak. I also appreciate so many of our district leaders joining us this evening. We have a number of people on the line. And for the record, I'd like to start doing a roll call so that we can capture who's on the line. I'm going to start with our school committee members. We have Mr. John Malady, myself, Rachel Abel. We have Kim Coelho. We have Ms. Kelly Ferretti. We have Ms. Karen Robinson and Ms. Lorraine Visnick. We are also joined this evening by Superintendent Sue Chirocek. We have our Executive Secretary Donna Bergeron, our Director of Finance Jean Sherburne, our Director of, what is it? Pupil and Services for Special Ed Bethany Spansky. We have our BTA President and Teacher Julia Brotherton on the line, our Director of Transportation Dana Khrushenk. We have Assistant Superintendent Dorothy Flaherty. We have our Athletic Director Dan Keefe. We are joined by HR Director John Harmon. We have Principal Julie Smith. I think I saw Principal Betty Taylor on the line. And I think it's Phil Coder, the Assistant Principal at the high school, also on the line. That's who I'm seeing this evening in addition to BevCam. Is there anyone else that has joined? Sorry, Mayor Cahill, I apologize.
No, no, that's right.
I saw you. Thank you. Okay. And we'll watch for, there we go. We have the Assistant Principal Terry Conant just joining us on audio, as well as Assistant Principal Mark Thomas from the high school. So we have middle school and high school, as well as some elementary school principals joining us. So thank you again. Hopefully, third time's a charm. I again appreciate people being able to locate that mute and unmute button and again using the convention of a hand in front of the camera, if you have your camera available, so that we can get through our agenda this evening. The first order of business, I wanted to do the pledge of allegiance, but I'm having a difficult time sharing. Oh, there it is, my little flag. Let me share that. And I'd ask Ms. Visnick if you might lead us in the pledge, if you'd like to come off mute to join us. I would encourage everyone to do so. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I think we're getting a bit better at that. So thank you, everyone. Get my screen back. Yeah, I'll have to figure that out in a second. Our second order of business is the approval of our meeting records. We have actually two sets of meeting records that I'd like us to entertain this evening. We have our regular school committee meeting from February 12th, 2020. We also have our March 30th, 2020 Committee of the Whole. That was the last time we met remotely. I think it's in everyone's best interest that we get our meeting records approved and shareable as soon as possible during this unusual time. So with that said, I would entertain a motion to approve the February 12th, 2020 Regular School Committee meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho. Were there any edits, comments, adjustments that we need to be making? I don't think I am hearing any. Okay. We must do a roll call vote for each of our votes this evening. So I'll start with Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Ms. Coelho? Yes, okay. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Thank you. And myself, Rachel Abel, yes. Okay. We have accepted the February 12th, 2020 meeting minutes as recorded. And next, I'd entertain a motion to approve the March 30th, 2020 Committee of the Whole record.
So moved. Second.
I heard Ms. Ferretti and I think Ms. Robinson?
Yep.
Okay. She just beat you by a bit, Ms. Visnick. Okay. And same, are there any comments, corrections that we need to be making on these records? If not, we'll do a reverse roll call. And Rachel Abel, yes. Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Coelho? Yes, I missed that. Sorry, I was looking down. Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you everyone for that. We have two items by consensus. We do need to continue to provide our, oh, thank you, Dr. Chirocek, for joining us again. We do need to continue to provide our consensus for the warrants that are being paid by the city during this time. We have two of them in front of us. The superintendent recommends both for approval. They are letters A and letter B on our agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve the items as represented in our agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Do I have a second? Mr. Malady, thank you. Okay. So for those two items, again, by roll call vote, I'm going to start with Ms. Coelho. Yes, okay. Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. Okay, thank you for helping us promptly get through the business of the evening. Next, I turn the floor over to Dr. Chirocek. I believe she is with us. I see her logged in.
Yes, I'm here.
You are.
I don't have a video and I'm going to keep it off because I keep getting bumped off. And so I'm hoping that if I don't use the video, I'll be able to last longer with you. So I apologize in advance for that. So in terms of the superintendent's report, we had three items on there. The first was school choice. I believe, is that what you wanted me to address first, Rachel?
Sure, sure. The way we left it last time is you had given us some information about the available seats. Ms. Sherburne had given us some information about the revenues that come in from those seats. And I believe what remains is for the committee to give direction. Is that correct?
Right, so just to kind of reiterate for everyone, given the current enrollments that we have and the open seats that we have, we have 35 open seats sitting right now as we speak. Just in terms of revenue, that we typically get $5,000 per seat for each seat in school choice, which is a total of $175,000 that we would bring in in revenues next year if we were to fill those 35 seats. I think there's a couple of grade levels that have a greater number of seats in kindergarten. Of course, because it's a new year, there are 10 open seats. If we were to accept the 10 kindergartners, that would be $50,000 in revenue. And again, we talked a little bit last time about our kindergarten enrollments. They have, we have not seen a significant shift. It's, you know, we're not open, so it's kind of hard to figure out if it's changing too much. But we, at this time, are running with a relatively moderate enrollment in kindergarten for this time of year. And so, and then in grades one and two combined, there are seven seats. And we do have a very high enrollment in grade one. However, the four seats that are open would be, or three seats that are in grade one are sprinkled. You know, we would decide where they would go. So I guess at this point, and the only other grade would be grade nine, where there are six open seats. And again, our rising ninth grader class is not that large. So if you're asking me for what I think, looking into next year and the financial budget on the forecast that we see, I think anytime we can bring revenues into the city, it will be really good. So I would be recommending to stay with those numbers. But it's a vote for you guys to do. So I just thought I'd share that information with you.
Madam President?
Thank you, Ms. Visnick.
May I please make a motion that we accept Dr. Chirocek's recommendation if for no other reason to have a discussion? That we, the motion would be that we accept, that we would accept the choice numbers. We would accept all, to fill all the choice seats as they are today.
So 10 from K to eight and 15 from nine to 12.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Coelho, thank you. Okay, and we can open up discussion?
I have a question.
Sure, Ms. Visnick.
I wonder if Dr. Chirocek could speak a little further to any given grade where we have empty seats and how, if we were to fill those seats, how we would sprinkle, I think is the word you used, Dr. Chirocek, sprinkle those children around versus saying, okay, if we add six more, six more ninth graders, well, ninth grade's a little different. So if we add three at the first grade, in fact, even if we added them all at one school, we probably have three sections already at a given school. And so really, it would be a total of one child per class. Can you speak to the concerns that any given person might have about our class sizes and the class sizes perhaps pushing on some limits that some might consider high? Or maybe I scared her away.
Dr. Chirocek, are you still with us? She lost her audio again. She's just reported to me in a private chat. So I think she'll be trying to dial back in.
Madam President?
Yes, Mayor Cahill?
In the meantime, I get the sense that one of the benefits of supporting the request to not limit our choice students in is the revenues that will come with it that we certainly can put to good use. And I get the sense that'll be some of the conversation when we get the superintendent back on the line.
I think that's my takeaway as well. I also understand that we can't know who the children are, but I definitely want our faculty and our employees to have the ability to choice in their students so that they, you know, can have a reasonable work-life balance and schedule. I do know that we lose some of our Beverly kids to neighboring districts where their parents are employed. And I think that I've heard from constituents over the years that it's just kind of a nice thing for districts to do for each other. I think we're being joined again by Dr. Chirocek on the phone. Is that correct?
All right, sorry about that. I am just calling in. I'm not attempting to try the video anymore.
Okay.
So I apologize.
Sure.
Is it okay if I do it by phone?
That's fine. I just want to fill you in. Mayor Cahill and I were both reflecting on the revenues. And I was also reflecting on the fact that we may have, even though we can't know for certain who will get the seats because it's by lottery, we may have faculty or other reasons that, you know, we should reciprocate what other neighboring districts are also offering. But if you could address Ms. Visnick's question, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I think she was asking how do we determine where those seats go? And is that, I lost her at sprinkle in. And so could you repeat the question, Mrs. Visnick?
Any given constituent is concerned about class sizes. And so I thought you could speak to and possibly alleviate those concerns relative to how we choose where we place the children, when we accept them. That even if we were to accept, for instance, three first graders, they would not all go into the same classroom. They might not all even go to the same school. And we would thus sprinkle them across. And therefore, it's not as big an impact as it might seem, quote unquote, on paper.
Exactly. That's what I was alluding to when I was speaking earlier. We decide where we accept them, into what school and into what classrooms. So, you know, we would only accept them into classrooms that had available space. And by available space, would not create larger class sizes than we would want.
I'm looking for, thank you. I'm looking for hands on the screen. Are there other committee members that wish to ask a question?
Ms. Abel, I should, we should offer to Dr. Chirocek, actually anybody else on the line, that if you want to, quote unquote, raise your hand in the participants panel, I'll be trying to keep my eye on that. So, oh, but Dr. Chirocek, you're not in on the computer, right? You're just in on your phone?
I'll just try very politely.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands. That indicates to me that the committee might be ready to vote on the motion that we have on the table to retain the current level of school choice, which is from K to eight, 10 students, and from nine to 12, 15 students. If we are ready to vote, I can do a roll call. Okay, I'm seeing some little nods. I'm going to start, I'll start at the back end of that last roll call with myself, and I vote yes. Then Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
Mr. Malady?
Yes.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Ms. Coelho?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So we will continue to offer the choice at the same levels for this next school year. Dr. Chirocek, thank you so much for sending along the memorandum of agreement. I believe all committee members should have received that last night and hopefully have had an opportunity to review the contents. Could you perhaps, for the benefit of those that haven't yet received it, just give an overview of what this memorandum of agreement is establishing?
So, you know, in our collective bargaining agreement that we enter into with the union, we establish working conditions and all of those things. So the closure in our new remote learning plan certainly brings a big change for some of those things. So it's customary to work with the union and they have the opportunity to impact bargain some of those changes. So we met over a period of three or four different meetings to discuss some of the questions that they had. And to this sort of, this memorandum of agreement is sort of us making some assurances to them as to what they can expect. And it just sort of delineates these very unprecedented and unusual circumstances that we're all navigating as part of the remote learning platform. So we looked at a number of topics. The first topic was in particular around base pay and health insurance. So just assuring that the district would be continuing to maintain the members' contractual benefits and their compensation, so to speak. We talked in particular about some areas of stipends. Stipends are, is money that we provide to members or to staff for providing work beyond the workday. So stipends are for jobs that teacher leaders take on and the work is done outside of their contractual day. So we came to, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about it. The majority of the work has already begun and was, you know, they're two-thirds through the year. And so we're in the memorandum of agreement, we're agreeing to pay those stipends to the teachers that do that work and expecting that the members will continue to fulfill the work remotely, just as we are in teaching, you know, as we're doing with teachers and the teaching. The only thing that we left open was the spring athletic stipends. Largely, MIAA has, you know, they're still believing that we may have a spring season. We agreed to meet later, once there was a final decision on what we would do about the spring sports stipends. So that's part, the agreement is to agree to meet later. That's within the MOA for that. We talked about employees' illnesses and absentee procedures. You know, what does one do if they're sick? And we agreed that, you know, if there was an illness that interfered with an employee's ability to participate in the remote learning, the way that we've aligned it in the remote learning plan, then they would call out sick and they would use sick time just like they would throughout the regular year. We worked out some questions around FMLA and if someone was out on leave, what would happen. And in addition, we identified that and recognized that the new FFCRA, which is the legislation around Families First, Leave Act in response to the coronavirus, that if there were any of our employees that fell under any of the conditions outlined in that, that we obviously would acknowledge that and that they could work through their, it's a very complex eligibility requirement and so that they could work through that with human resources. We agreed on the remote learning plan. The remote learning plan was a very large document. I sent that to you as well. And we're going to talk a little bit about the remote learning plan a little bit later in the meeting. But we spent a lot of time, that plan was created with the collaboration with teachers and with members of the union and making sure that, you know, we were all in agreement as to what our expectations were for work through the closure. We did that, we talked about Unit B, Unit A, and Unit C, so that they're all incorporated in the same memorandum of agreement. We talked about teacher evaluation. Again, that's another thing that we said we would come back to the table. We're all awaiting guidance from the Department of Ed on what we will be doing about timelines and that sort of thing. And then we finally, we just said that this memorandum of agreement would remain, if there's an extension of the closure, that it would remain in effect up until the last day of school in June. So that's the summary of what we agreed to. You know, many thanks to Julia and to Brenda, who were the president and vice president who spent time talking with us. And of course, this is an agreement that we have come to, depending, you know, with the stipulation, with approval of the school committee. So I'm kind of presenting that to you so that you give me the okay to go ahead and say that, yes, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, so the memorandum of agreement is pending the approval of the school committee in this case. I think historically, different MOAs have had the superintendent's past approval. But whereas this is basically guaranteeing pay and health insurance and defining a really unusual set of working conditions, I understand how this should be coming to us. So I think at this time, I think what we need is a motion for the school committee by way of the chair and/or superintendent to ratify the memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. I appreciate that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Okay. So with a motion and second on the table, do we have any questions or concerns about the memorandum? Mayor Cahill, please.
Yes, just a comment before we voted. This is probably as good a time as any. I just want to thank the superintendent, her team, all of our administrators, and all of our staff for all the incredible work that they are doing, have been doing for several weeks and will be doing going forward. As you say, Madam President, this is just not regular times. And so, you know, trying to adjust and learn and do all this on the fly, with many of them having their own families at home with them, you know. I mean, there's just a lot going on. And I feel like our leadership team from the building level right through central office and all of our staff, school by school, are doing fantastic work. I just want to say thanks to all of them.
Thank you. And thank you from all of the staff, too. I know they appreciate that and they really are working on it.
We're hearing lots of great feedback on what Beverly's doing. So thank you. Are there any questions, concerns, additional comments? I'll look for a hand in the window if you wish to speak. Otherwise, I'm going to assume we're ready to take a roll call vote to allow this document to be ratified by the school committee and superintendent. I see no hands. Let's start a fresh roll call. We will start with Ms. Kelly Ferretti.
Yes.
And Ms. Kim Coelho? Yes. We'll have Ms. Lorraine Visnick?
Yes.
Mr. John Malady?
Yes, and thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Rachel Abel? Yes. And Karen Robinson, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, by a vote of 7-0, the motion is passed.
All right, great. They're going to, I know the board is, the board of the union is meeting, I think, tomorrow evening. And so we'll pen, we'll finalize it all up and that will take, it's a, I think, a relief for the teachers and for all of us to, you know, have that settled. So thank you for that.
Okay. And you mentioned one of the sort of attachments to this memorandum is the Beverly Keeps Learning Remote Learning Plan. Did you have some information that you wanted to present to us on that topic?
So I don't want to go through the whole document. I guess I just sort of wanted to open the floor to see if there were any, if there was anyone that had any questions in particular on the plan itself. I think the only major, we made a few refinements. So last time when we met, I think somebody posed the question, why did we choose April 6th for the starting of the next phase? And we definitely did that on purpose so that we had a week to reflect and make some adjustments and find out what was working and what wasn't working. In our plan, we further defined how we would, what grading would look like. I think particularly our secondary families had some questions about what that would look like. So we were able to provide some guidance on how we were going to manage the grading. I can give a quick synopsis. Basically, at the elementary and middle school, during the closure period for assignments, they're not graded for a letter grade, per se, but there is credit for participation. We spent a lot of time thinking about, throughout the closure, how would we motivate some of our students to make sure that they were participating and understand that, you know, their ability to participate in this learning is almost as important a skill as some of the other, you know, sort of social emotional skills we talk about all the time, self-awareness and self-responsibility and those things. In terms of the high school, that was the area that we were really, spent some time thinking about because there are students that have concerns about transcripts and what will it look like on transcripts and the impact that it has on so many of the aspects of high school that we don't have the same, you know, that we don't really have those same concerns, pre-K through eight. The high school team came up with a, I think, a pretty creative solution where the work will still count. And so students, we want to make sure that everyone understands that the high school work counts. It's not given a letter grade, per se. The work that is done remotely will be for credit, no credit, or incomplete. However, we didn't want to minimize any of the work that was done prior to the closure for those students in quarter three who got off to a great start. But also provide an opportunity for students who may have, want to go back and make up some of that work from quarter three. And so what they've come up with is a plan to merge quarters two and three into almost like a semester-long grade that they'll get at the end of the year. That grade will then count twice on the transcript. And the work during the closure, remote work, will be graded as credit, no credit. And that credit, the students will have an opportunity to roll some of those, some extra points into their final average with work completion. And as we did with throughout the plan, equity is really important to us. So everyone will have an opportunity to make up and/or be excused based upon any circumstances that might come up. Because we're mindful that some families may be dealing with illnesses or may be dealing with some other scenarios. I mean, at the core of all of this, it's a health, a national health emergency. And so we don't want to forget that fact, so.
I just want a clarification. I think you said Q2 and 3, but I think you mean Q3 and 4, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's Q3 and, sorry, I said.
No, I know, it's tricky where we have some on trimesters and some still on quarters.
That's right.
Okay.
And then the other, the only other real big declaration sort of that we made was around, we defined one video conferencing platform for our student-teacher communications, so teacher-to-student communications, and we went with Google Meet. We spent a lot of time looking and researching both platforms, and we all agree Zoom is a very powerful and strong one, but Zoom was not designed for an educational purpose. It's really an enterprise platform. And as such, I don't think they have the same level of security features that Google Meet has in it that was designed for that. And we are a gap district, so thus, the Google products have, we have assurances from them around security and privacy and FERPA and HIPAA and all those things. So we did, we have chosen Google Meet as the preferred video platform. We've made a couple of exceptions. One of them is the performing arts at the high school, because Zoom is an app-based product versus a web-based product, I really am out of my league, but I'm going to try to say it correctly. The calibration of the music when they're singing or playing is much better in Zoom, so we said, yes, they should stick with Zoom. And we've had some requests for some, from some of our special education families, particularly in our, you know, an autism program, that the Zoom platform works better for them, and so would we be able to do that, and we've made that exception as well. I think most everything else we've covered once before. Any questions on the specifics of the document?
I'm looking for hands. You just put your hand up in front of the camera. Ms. Visnick?
I have a question actually, not about the specifics of the document, but rather, as you, as the district picked a video conferencing platform, I'm wondering what suggestions were given, if any, to the different departments picking their delivery mechanisms? In particular, I spent a lot of time today reliving my college years as a math major, working on a platform called EdPuzzle and Delta Math. They're both fantastic. And so, I just wonder whether all the high school math teachers are using that same platform or if they've kind of been left to choose their own favorite platform.
And that's a great question. So here's, this is one of the things that I think is so unique about this opportunity. We, I think if you were to poll our teachers, there's, they've learned more in the last four weeks about what's available and different ways to use technology and different platforms that are out there. I know that the departments are meeting together and sharing resources. We're receiving resources daily. The Department of Ed is sending out new resources, so I can't speak to whether all the math teachers are using the exact same ones, but I do know that there is a platform for sharing sample lessons and what went well and what didn't go well. And Judy Miller has been doing a lot of work with our teachers, as well as at some of the levels, Alex Woznick and Barb Peto, around, you know, curating lists and recommendations and vetting out certain platforms. So it's, I'm glad to hear there were, that was one. I think, I think one of the silver linings perhaps of a very difficult situation is that our teachers have really taken it, taking, taken the charge to find new ways to present content and new technology platforms that help them do that. So, you know, I, but I do know that at the high school and at the middle school, that the content teams are sharing, and at the elementary and the middle, the grade level teams are sharing, and they're having meetings specifically for that, so.
A follow-up, Madam President?
Yes, Ms. Visnick.
I'm far less concerned about that at the high school level than I am at the elementary level, and I've been out at the elementary level for a while, but I think already across our five different elementaries, we had any given elementary using a different reading program than any other elementary. And now, we may introduce this further, I'll call it a skew, even though that word has a real negative connotation. I'm just concerned, I understand 1,000% that we're in this unprecedented time, I just have heard from people already that they're concerned that we already had potential skew in between the five elementaries with a given reading program per se, and now there may be, even within a grade, teachers choosing different platforms. So I just, I bring it up, and if you can address it, great. If you can't, that's fine, too.
Well, I would like to, you know, I, I think what I really would like to, at least hopefully, solve for some of you is that misconception that they're not, I think, if anything, this particular situation has brought more collaboration and more consistency across grade levels than we've ever had. However, our, the five elementary principals, I don't know that they've ever spent this much time with each other, and I would say that our delivery of instruction and our selection of materials is actually far more aligned than it has ever been. I do think that there's some misconceptions regarding project-based learning. If someone is, if someone chooses to follow a particular project-based learning course, and it looks in content a little different, but I assure you that the standards that are underneath all of them are aligned across all five schools, and we're being very careful to do that. And I think that, I'll make a suggestion that that's a great topic for our curriculum and instruction meeting in the future coming up, to have us bring the coaches together and talk a little bit more about how we do that and why it may look different, and yet that the standard, the learning standards are very similar at the core.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, I'm looking to members to see if I see any additional hands. Any questions on the Beverly Keeps Learning Remote Learning Plan? Don't see any hands right now. Dr. Trocheck, did you need any action from us on this topic?
No, I don't need action on that topic. I do have one other area that I would like to talk about, and that is April vacation as part of our remote learning plan. One of the conversations has been, our current calendar has us off from April 20th to April 24th as an April vacation. Many of the districts around us, actually all the districts around us and our surrounding communities are all grappling with, should we consider remaining open during the April vacation week? The many positive reasons for doing that are that we have really, we're in the infancy of establishing our routines around some of this remote learning. There's so much uncertainty about whether or not we, when and if we'll return at the school year right now, and as well as, there's really nowhere for anyone to go during April vacation right now. And so, I, we, with, in conjunction with the union, we coordinated a survey just to get a temperature of what, where parents were standing and where staff was standing. Our results, first of all, never have we sent a survey out that got so many responses. So we had 1,887 responses from parents and 471 responses from staff, which is about 50%, well, close to 50%. And overwhelmingly, we had 81% of our parents supporting working through April vacation and 19% not. And then for staff, the same thing, 89% supported working through the vacation and 11% did not. So that, I just wanted to, I did that for my own peace of mind to see, you know, what would, if I were asked, what's my recommendation to be? I wanted it to represent what, you know, the people in the community were thinking. So I guess I ask you, and I will tell you that the union is in support of it, you know, if in fact the school committee chooses to vote to amend the calendar so that we work through April vacation.
Okay, I see Mr. Mulady's hand.
I'd like to make a motion. That's, this is the time for it.
Sure, Mr. Mulady.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the school calendar to continue having a school in session during April vacation.
Would we be retaining Patriots' Day as a holiday, or?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure, because our vacation overlaps a holiday as well, so.
Yes, Sue did a good impression of me, yes.
So continuing to keep the holiday Patriots' Day as well as the four days of vacation days, okay. So the holiday?
Just for clar, just for clarification, that would make the final day of school Friday, June 19th.
Second.
Ms. Visnick is giving a second to that motion? Okay. Do we have any questions, concerns, conversation?
I just wanted to ask, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good, I switched my, my audio. Did the, and excuse me, Dr. Trocheck, if you already said this, but did we receive a fair return on the survey that was sent out from both parents?
Oh, yes. You must have been, yeah, you must have been out. I had 1,887 parents respond to the survey. Eighty-nine, eight, I'm sorry, 81% were in favor of continuing remote learning through the vacation, and 19% did not wish to do that. We had 471 staff respond, 89% of the staff preferred to work through the vacation, and 11% did not.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, we have a motion on the table to work through the holiday and vacation days to amend our calendar with a new end date of June 19th. Do we have more comments? I thought, Ms. Visnick, you had a hand. Go ahead.
Again, I just want to say that I think that it's, it's wonderful that all those parents responded, but it was, it would behoove our community to have a, the continued structure as opposed to free time. I am concerned with the number of people I see out and about, the number of people I see out without masks, et cetera. So having a reason to stay in, having the structure, having work to do, I think is helpful in trying to help, to encourage, to continue to encourage our students to stay in and help us continue to try to flatten the curve.
If I don't see other hands, I'm going to call on myself. I have two test subjects that sit in the room next door all day, and I have to say, as a person who has worked from home for at least the past 12 years, and now I'm joined by a husband who is working in the medical device field, building ventilators and patient monitors, the structure that's provided by the teachers has been outstanding to support the ongoing work that we both need to do in our chosen professions, and I think that we have a lot of similarly situated. I do appreciate comments that have been sent my way for parents that say, you know, our kids just need a break, and I'm hopeful that those parents are able to understand that the structure of the content is providing students a wonderful opportunity to pick their own global apps or specials. I've seen a lot of watercoloring, I've seen a lot of sport and activity in the backyard, I've seen a lot of ways for the students to sort of blow off steam, or just chat with their, their friends in a sort of moderated and productive way with their teachers or their parents. So I'm hopeful that parents will start to understand that the rigor and the structure that is being pulled together by our teachers is actually helping our kids maybe in some way, and hopefully that more, more parents will take an opportunity to review the revised remote learning plan to understand the objectives. And I appreciate everything that Dr. Trocheck and, and the others in the administration and in the staff have really done to, to keep front and center that everyone's, you know, social and emotional health is really part of this, this plan, so.
Ms. Abel, can I just restate to make sure that everyone's clear, that we would not be learning remotely on Monday, April 20th? That is the holiday for the Patriots' Day, but we, but we would be continuing on the 21st through the 24th.
Okay, thank you for re-saying that. I wasn't quite sure, because I was trying to do the math with the four versus the five days. So, okay, so the Monday Patriots' Day would remain the holiday, so there would be a three-day weekend, so to speak.
Right.
And there would be four days of structured content. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Does that prompt any additional questions, concerns? I don't see any hands in front of the camera, so I'm assuming we are ready to vote?
Right.
Okay, I need to come up with a new roll call here. We will start with Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
And Ms. Visnick?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Abel, yes? And Ms. Coelho?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulady?
Yes.
Okay, by, that motion passes, seven to zero, and we will continue learning those four days that were previously marked as our April vacation. Okay. Dr. Trocheck, is there anything else from your perspective?
No, that's all for the superintendent's report right now.
Okay, we'll switch gears, and I have a few pieces of housekeeping to work through with the committee. At our last meeting, we had moved to suspend our policy DK as it relates to payment procedures, and by the policy BGF that allows us to suspend the policy, we need to address this policy at our next meeting. So I have placed it on the agenda, it's been distributed in your packet, and really, we have a couple of different options. You know, I think we're in a really extraordinary time with the COVID-19 pandemic. I think that this is a policy that does not actually need to be reviewed or revised at this time, and so I would like to make a motion as the chair that we make no edits to this policy. This is an extraordinary reason for the suspension, and that it should remain in its normal review cycle with our policy subcommittee. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. Do we have any comments, concerns, questions? Kind of a procedural, Ms. Visnick?
I would just like to make sure we have added a burden to Ms. Ferretti to be the signer every week, so I don't want to vote on this without hearing that she's okay to, or we have to reallocate the burden to someone else.
That's, that's a very good point, Ms. Visnick, thank you. Ms. Ferretti, is it working out okay?
It's working out fine, thank you for asking. It's working in my schedule and giving me a nice reason to leave my four kids up to their own remote learning for a little bit, so it's, it's fine.
We appreciate that so much, and if things change, please do reach back out to us and we can reevaluate.
Will do, thank you.
Thanks. If there's no other hands, I don't see any other hands or questions, we can take, I guess, a vote on that motion to do nothing at this time, just to let it remain in the review, the policy review cycle as stands. I'll start with Mr. Mulady. Yes, okay. Rachel Abel, yes. Kim Coelho? Yes, okay. Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Yes. Lurenne de Visnick?
Yes.
And Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you missed me.
Oh, sorry. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there we go. Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Okay, by a vote of seven to zero, we have decided to let this policy remain as is in our normal review cycle. Okay, the next item was just to talk a little bit about our schedule of our meetings and the continuation of using remote meeting options. I am doing a little bit of work in the background to see if BevCam is able to smoothly broadcast these. As I mentioned at the start of this call, they are with us this evening, they are broadcasting on Channel 99 and their YouTube channel. We're investigating a couple of other options, but for all intents and purposes, I think this is a platform that suits us well, gives us the ability to have the video screen, the names, we can call upon each other and present in a relatively smooth fashion, and it does give us a pretty good quality output for a local recording. We've done a couple Committee of the Holes, and this is our first regular school committee meeting. We also have some work that our subcommittees would need to do, and so I would like to see us resume a few of those meetings. We have, obviously, our budgets to consider as well as some open items that were left with our facility and finance, our curriculum instruction, and our policy meetings. I would also say that in terms of the joint council, I did follow up with President Guanci of the city council. They are meeting on the 13th, and he wished to gauge, he wishes to gauge the interest of other counselors in potentially doing a remote meeting. We were hoping to have some more information about how these could run in their best manner, and a little bit more clarity on how long we are going to be participating remotely before making an ultimate decision on setting a joint council this way. So I definitely welcome suggestions on improving the way that we're running our remote meetings, but for all intents and purposes, the chairs of our standing committees should endeavor to work with the administration on setting some of those meetings that we have on our calendar. You know, we canceled our last SISL meeting, just in the hurry of everything. Ms. Visnick, are we intending to host FNF next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Jean's on, right? Jean, that's on our list of things to do, correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And, you know, I haven't actually spoken with Dr. Trocheck yet about the need for a Committee of the Whole meeting this week, but, but certainly I think we should all keep that date on our calendar. We're now working again vacation week, and I know we had bumped our Committee of the Whole out, I think, for that. But we'll, we'll just keep an eye on our calendars, reserving our Wednesday nights and work through that. Are there any questions? I don't see any hands. Okay. The next item we had left over from our March agenda was for the Beverly Middle School Principal Search, which is currently suspended. But at that meeting, I wish to appoint Karen Robinson as the school committee representative to that committee. So when they do pick up their work again, she will be our point person joining the selection committee. Okay. Thank you, Karen, so much for making yourself available to do that important work.
Thank you.
Okay, next, let's get some committee reports. Again, when we left our March agenda, we had a few open items, and I believe Ms. Visnick, if you would, present to us some of the goings on from the Finance and Facilities meeting from February?
Sure thing. Thank you. The Finance and Facilities meeting last met on February 26th, and we did our usual kind of business of reviewing the B&amp;G report. And our, our big kind of call out, our extra work that we did was that Ms. Sherburne presented to the committee a report of other school, well, I shouldn't say other, I apologize, of school funding sources. So for instance, we have a school appropriation budget, which is comprised of Chapter 70 money, approximately, I'm going to just really round the numbers, approximately $9 million this year comes from Chapter 70 and a city contribution of approximately $52 million, and that is our quote-unquote "school appropriation." However, there is an additional almost $4 million that comes from revolving accounts, including but not limited to the circuit breaker, the, the circuit breaker being the bulk of those additional funds, school choice, which we just voted to, to continue with, preschool and kindergarten, tuitions, athletics, music, transportation, building rental, and non-resident tuition, also known as SEVIS. And each of those items is earmarked to a particular cost in our budget. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. I'm going to put something, I'm going to, I'm going to try, I'm going to try to share my screen. So we'll see here. Because I found this particular graphic that Jean brought forward very useful, this pie chart. How about, can anybody unmute and tell me if they can see it?
I can see it.
Fantastic. Thank you. So you can see here the different colors. So the city contribution by far is, is the bulk of what we spend in our budget. But certainly, as we went into the financial forecasting, we wanted to make sure that other people understood that there's this other chunk in this picture, well, on my screen, they're yellow and gray, that make up additional funds that we do spend to make the totality of our school budget. All right. So that's, that was kind of our quote-unquote "fun" or extra part. And then we did a lot of business. And so the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of the following budget transfers from the Administrative Contingency Account, AD 761013. They're all in your packets. They total $173,770. Again, that money would come out of the admin contingency account and would go into equally the five different elementary schools, kindergarten teacher salaries. And the reason for that transfer is so that the 173 comes from this year's additional state funds, which we put into the admin contingency account to be voted on how to spend at a later time. This is our later time. And we're paying the kindergarten teacher salaries with that money instead of the kindergarten revolving account so that we can save the kindergarten revolving account funds to pay the salaries next year as, as part of our path towards having free full-day kindergarten.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended transfers from the AD 761013. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Do we have any questions or concerns about this transfer? Okay. We can take a roll call vote. And Ms. Visnick, I think we have a gratitude for a gift that maybe we skipped over, so we'll get back to that one if you want to get that one lined up for
Okay.
Next.
I was all excited about this one.
Yeah. Let's see. We will start actually with you, Ms. Visnick, by roll call. Thank you. Ms. Coilo? Yes. Thumbs up. And Ms. Ferretti?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
John Malady? Okay, thumbs up. Rachel Abel? Yes. And we're missing one K.
Me.
Karen Robinson? Yes. Okay, thank you. I, I get all out of order when I try to mix it up. We're not supposed to put any one person on the hot seat each time on their vote. Okay. So Ms. Visnick, did you find that first $500 gift?
I did, thank you. So the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the acceptance with gratitude of the following gifts to schools in January of this year. The Hana PTO is donating school-wide $500.
I'll make a motion to accept that gift with gratitude.
Can I second my own motion?
Sure.
I will second my committee's motion, I guess.
Okay. And we'll start the vote with myself. Yes. Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Thanks. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
John Malady? Thumbs up. Okay. Kim Coilo?
Head nod.
Head nod, yes. Okay. And Lauren DeVisnick?
Yes. And I missed my chance. Who would ever say no to donated money?
Yes. We appreciate.
Okay. Our next, our next item, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends approval of the following budget transfers also out of the Administrative Contingency Account, AD 76113. $15,000 to try to, well, to be allocated to hire a business, a financial analyst, an assistant business manager type of position, and additional $5,000 to cover the health insurance for that particular individual. And I think I should say here that we, as a committee, as a school committee, talked about our priorities and what we would like to do with the additional funds from the state this year, and very high on our list of priorities was bringing in an assistant business manager, if for no other reason than to help take care of some of the more mundane day-to-day type of tasks to, in order to free up Jean so she could go do some more deep dive, digging into where we might find cost savings in our budget or planning more kind of deep thought-planning type of activities. So that's, those budget transfers would be, again, out of the extra funds, and they would be earmarked to bring somebody in. We did not think we'd be able to bring that individual in until at least April, and here we are, it's already April 8th, and we don't have that person yet. So a partial year salary, and then next year, we would, well, next year's all a little wild right now, right? But the conversation in our meeting was that this additional funds from the state should be recurring, and then this position, the totality of this person's salary would be picked up under those recurring state funds next year.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the transfer from the Admin Contingency, AD 761013, for this position. A second? Kim Coilo, thank you. And I, I think I recall in that meeting, I think I was watching from the wings, that there was also an element of cross-training. Ms. Sherburne, maybe if you could come off mute for a moment, you could just remind us some, some of the objectives you have for this position.
Yes, this position would be, the plan was to have them cross-train. So if we have any retirements or other, help develop a business procedure so that we do have, you know, somebody in place that can help in that area, and to look deeper into see where we can have some savings in the budget analyzing the separate accounts.
Thank you for that reminder. Do we have any other questions? I'm looking for a hand in front. Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President. So we keep talking about how we're in a unique time, and I think, and I know Dr. Trocheck understands this well, as I'm sure we all do. We just don't know what's coming our way next year in terms of our ability to fund our budgets. We don't know what, we don't know how local revenues are going to be impacted. We know that there's, there's going to be some loss for sure. We don't know how state aid is going to be impacted. So one of the things that we're doing our, our best on the city side of the budget to do is to not spend any money that we can absolutely get away with not spending so that we can turn back as much as possible as of June 30th to help replenish our free cash amount, to keep us in a position to fund things over the next couple, a budget, maybe couple or few budget cycles. So I look at this, and while I was able to support the new position when we were thinking we'd be getting over $1 million in new Chapter 70 funds for FY '21, I don't think anybody thinks that, that that is at all assured. So I look at this, and it doesn't make any sense to hire somebody late in the year who may very well need to be laid off a couple months after they're hired. This look, although it's not a big sum of money in, in terms of FY '20, it looks to me like dollars that should be left unspent and ready to be turned back so that we'll have them to spend next year.
Rachel, I took myself off mute. So I, Dr. Shorochek and I have spoken about that, so I agree with Mayor Cahill at the time on this. We did have the position posted. We did not get to the point of being, doing any interviews. So we are in agreeance that it's not something that we will be fulfilling for this year. However, what I would ask is since the Finance and Facilities did vote to put that there, we do the transfer there, and then later on, we'll be doing a transfer out to where we need it, might need it for food service, salaries, because we're not taking in the money into the revolving. So we can either do two things. We can vote it down now or move it there, and then, yes, of course, when we stop building the budget for FY '21, if there's no funds there, of course, we would not hire someone.
Ms. Visnick?
I just want to say that further down in the report is the request to actually add the position. So we have a little bit of a horse in a cart, or a chicken and an egg. I don't, I don't know, make your, pick your, pick your animal analogy. So, yeah, just the, the, the request to, the recommendation out of the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee to add this position is further down in my report. It's, and it's, this is the actual transfer of the funds. The funds are there now. As Jean says, we can either transfer them now or we can leave them in the admin contingency where, if, if everybody recalls, we all voted to put the funds in there, and the way that that works is we have to vote to move them out. Now, we also have to vote to do a transfer. So if we, if we transfer it to someplace and then we need to transfer it again later, we would still also have to vote. So to some extent, it's six of one and half dozen of another.
Okay, so we
Ms. Abel?
Mayor Cahill has his hand up.
Uh, Dr. Trocheck first, and then Mayor Cahill?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I mean, in terms of what Jean said, you know, we have, we will not be filling that this year. However, if the position is established and we did have funding, we, we would be looking to do that. So I think having the position isn't a problem. It's whether or not we would fill it, and we do not plan to fill it this year, and we would have to, my guess is we'll be revisiting the entire budget for next year before we make any decisions. So, you know, I, I mean, I don't see the harm in having the position, whether or not we fill it or not is the other question. And in terms of the, the fun moving the money, I, I agree with Jean. If you move it, it, you could move it the way that the Finance and Facility had said to do it, and then, you know, we'll, when it comes to the end and we're finalizing everything, we'll make the decisions about where that has to go.
Okay. Mayor Cahill?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Dr. Trocheck and Ms. Sherburne. I guess I'd say, I'm, I'm not sure I see the, the worth in creating the position, or should I say approving the position, before we have funding to, to fill it. And I also don't, from my point of view, it doesn't seem to make sense to transfer the money out of the admin contingency when there's no intent to spend it. And, and I understand everything's changed since the, you know, the recommendations were made. But so, I mean, as I'm looking at it, it makes sense to me anyway, and I intend to vote against this because I understand if it doesn't prevail, then it stays in that admin contingency. So that, that's how I'm looking at it. And, and I, I also, when we get to item five, I'll be voting against approving the position because we don't see right now that there'll be funding available to fill it. If and as that changes, we can easily, you know, bring that up at that time. So that's, that's just the way I'm thinking. I thank you for listening.
Mr. Malady?
Thank you. So just like thinking back of, you know, our first meeting before, we went to all virtual, like, we had, it was a really tough call thinking about canceling field trips. And I think for some of us, that was one of the toughest decisions we've had to made and had to make in a long time. And I tend to consider myself an optimist, but I think the reality is like, we're going to have a lot more challenging and difficult decisions to be made down the road, especially when it comes to finances. And I, I'm leaning towards the mayor's logic regarding this position, and it really like, you know, breaks my heart, you know, to be, you know, acknowledging that. But I feel like it's, I, I agree, like, I would be very concerned to oppose something or to approve of something and then to take away the possibility of that person's job potentially down the road. So I'm leaning towards the mayor and some fiscal caution. And that being said, you know, you know, I'm on the record being a very strong proponent of this position when the forecasts and things were much different and rosy. So that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malady. Other committee members wishing to speak? Ms. Visnick?
I, I should be able to find my unmute button faster. I apologize. I guess I, it's hard to argue with that logic, and I won't attempt to argue with that logic, but I would like to go on record as saying, I think that the business office has been understaffed for a very long time. And in our Finance and Facilities meeting, Mr. Manzo, with his incredible institutional knowledge, remember the time when we did have an assistant business manager? And I guess I just want to use this time to give a shout out to what Jean does for us, and she does it incredibly well. And in my opinion, she is short-staffed. And so regardless of the finances, it, it took us a lot to get to the point where we, as a committee, said, we want to fund this. And it's therefore very difficult for me when you, you put those two things together, the fact that I think she's understaffed, and it took us so long to let this bubble up to become a priority. And the, as, as Mr. Malady said, part of the reason why, unfortunately, the only reason why, was because we got the extra money from the state this year. And the same thing is true about free full-day kindergarten. And so at some point in time, we are going to have to have some really tough conversations. I mentioned that in our last meeting. But that doesn't diminish my wish to absolutely acknowledge the amount of work that's to be done there. And I do think, I ask repeatedly questions around if we were not hiring contractors, if we could actually if we could actually fill a given rec on the city side where we use shared services, would we be saving money? We ask for reports all the time about things like, should we be paying for somebody to take tickets at the door? Are we making enough money on those ticket sales to even pay the fee of the person taking the tickets? All those kinds of things. We cannot be expected to make our own decisions relative to things like that without the data, without the time for somebody to do that reporting. And so I am heartbroken right now. I'm done.
Are there other committee members? I'll call myself. I think I echo Ms. Visnick's sentiments that having been the former Chair of FNF and understanding the important work that's done in the business office, specifically by Ms. Sherburne, that getting her the additional supports and the cross-training for the different positions, establishing business procedures that could help make the operations smoother and more transparent for all of us, for leadership, is vitally important. But attempting to hire at this time just doesn't seem to make sense from a logistical, practical, or budgetary standpoint. And so I, I share the heartbreak in saying that the mayor's logic is, is pretty sound. And I'm not sure that, you know, doing the transfer, although I understand sometimes transfers happen and then we'll just have to reverse that or something. But I don't, I don't think I can support it either at this time. With a heavy heart, though. And I'm optimistic that we'll, we'll be able to retain some of the new funding formula.
That said, Madam President, the recommendation did come out of the FNF. So I believe we, I believe I do not have the ability to withdraw that recommendation. Rather, I think we do need to vote.
Right, I think we, we need to vote. And my understanding is that if you voted in the affirmative in a subcommittee, you can change your vote at any time. It's only at the negotiating subcommittee where a member is not allowed to change their recorded vote from a, a subcommittee.
That is my understanding as well.
Okay, so with that said, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, unless there's any other hands. I'm looking carefully. No other hands? Okay. Mayor Cahill? For the transfer?
No.
Okay. John Malady?
No.
Thank you. Rachel Abel, no. Kelly Ferretti?
No.
Thank you. Kim Coilo?
Um, no.
No. Karen Robinson?
No.
And Lurinda Visnick? You're unmuted. I didn't see. She's having a hard time.
I am having a very, very difficult time. I have to vote, I have to vote no.
Okay. So the motion to make the transfer from the admin contingency into the AD and OT lines has failed by zero to seven or seven to zero. I don't know how you report out of failed. Okay, let's move on. Ms. Visnick, you have a couple of other items.
All right, so I'm going to go out of order off the agenda. And we're going to go to the position, seeing as though we already took that tough vote. We'll just follow it up with another tough vote. The Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends approval following new position request for a financial analyst. I'm not going to read the rest of it.
Just to confuse things, I will make a motion that we decline this new position at this time with optimistic hope that we can revisit it as part of our FY '21 budget.
Second.
So in this case, I made a motion to decline the position. Ms. Ferretti has seconded that. So a yes vote would affirm our declination of the position, our non-acceptance of the position, just to be clear. Do we have any questions or comments? Ms. Coilo, was that a comment or adjusting the video? Just adjusting? Okay.
No, it's getting my son's dinner.
Okay.
Sorry.
Just don't want to miss any hands this week. Okay, doesn't look like we have any further conversations, so let's just get through it. Kim Coilo? A yes vote would be to not open this position at this time.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Kelly Ferretti?
Yes.
Rachel Abel, yes. Mayor Cahill?
Yes.
Lurinda Visnick?
I whisper it because I don't want to say it out loud. Yes.
Okay, John Malady? Yes, thumbs up. Oh my goodness. Why is this so tough for me? Oh, it's me. Wait. Oh, I already said yes. Okay. Karen, I'm sorry. There's too many K's. Karen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that, that motion passes to decline at this time the position as described. Okay, Ms. Visnick, item number four?
Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of following budget transfers from the Reserve for Negotiations Account, OT 11861189, to various salary and benefits accounts. The total amount of transfers is $96,392. And it really is spread over a number of different, a number of different accounts. If you wish, Madam President, I would read those or I can share my screen. I can put them up on the screen. Or we can just, it's in everybody's packets.
They're in the packet and the agenda that was posted. So I think we're covered. Thank you for giving us the total of $96,392. I will make a motion to authorize the transfers per the recommendation of FNF.
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, do we have any questions for Mayor Cahill? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. And I, I see that there are a number of items here, so I don't want to slow us down much. I just want to ask for kind of an overall rationale for these lines and this funding, how that was brought forward and what's, you know, how it's meant to cover what's here.
Ms. Sherburne, could you give us a summary of why we have these little adjustments this year?
This was comparing the budget to the staffing pattern. And these lines did not have the adequate staffing money to cover the staffing, including, and then, and looking at the health insurance and the FICO also.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, it looks like FICO was a pretty big piece of it, as well as health insurance. Okay, do we have other questions from committee members? I'm looking for hands in the window. I don't see any hands. It seems to signify we're ready to vote. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. John Malady? Yes, with a thumbs up. Rachel Abel, yes. Lurinda Visnick?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to keep all my K's together. I'm going to start with Kelly Ferretti.
Yes.
And Kim Coilo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and Karen Robinson? Yes, okay, I saw that. And Mayor Cahill, please?
Yes.
Okay, with a vote of seven, zero, the motion has passed to do the transfers to reconcile the various salary and benefits accounts.
Madam President, Finance and Facilities is scheduled to meet next Wednesday night, the 15th, at seven o'clock via a Zoom meeting. That is yet to be posted. However, the committee members all received an email alerting them to the fact that we would reconvene. I've heard from all of our members of the public so far, our, our public servants. And they can all attend. And we will do our normal business type of things. We will not have any guest speakers or presentations.
Okay, I was going to ask that question. I think on the docket was technology. But we certainly understand that there's a lot to be figured out, especially after using this technology so much.
We, we might just talk about what's working right, how much we're leaning on it right now. But there's no planned presentation.
Okay, thank you for that. Next, we have the Chair, Kelly Ferretti, from our Standing Committee on Curriculum Instruction and Student Life. Not sure if you.
I, I spoke with Dr. Flaherty today, actually, no, I'm sorry, yesterday, about our next meeting. And we are planning on having it to discuss all the online learning and all the great stuff that teachers are, are doing.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not sure in March, if, since we didn't have the meeting, we reported out our February meeting. We, we did have a great set of presentations, if I recall. And those, that was recorded by Bev Cam, so we can refer people to that. The negotiating subcommittee, I don't believe, has met since the last time we met, although we did meet since the last regular school committee meeting. Don't have anything to report at this time since things have substantially changed. And we've actually had to cancel our last two scheduled meetings. But I am sure that at a meeting in the future, we will figure out how we will reschedule our, our negotiating subcommittee meetings with our teachers, administrators, teachers' unit. And then Policy Review Subcommittee. Kelly Ferretti, you're the Chair on that, so I'll let you do the report. I just wanted to point out in the packet, we had received a couple of red line policies. And hopefully people have those handy.
Yes, I am having some technical difficulty tonight. So I'm just trying to pull up the.
Sure, I can just let people know. So we had policy BCB and GBEA. They're presented by the Policy Subcommittee for our first reading tonight.
Yes.
Yeah. So I have received advice from MASC just regarding how first and second readings are to be undertaken. I was given advice that we don't typically want to do wordsmithing at our regular school committee meetings. You know, we could always refer back to the Policy Subcommittee if there's extensive wordsmithing. However, we do get an opportunity at our next meeting, on the second meeting, to, you know, move forward the edits or, or make small adjustments. So I don't know if there's any discussion to be had at this first reading. But if, if the Policy Chair might want to inform the school committee about the revisions that are presented, that might be helpful to further our conversation.
Yes, we have, we looked at two different policies. We looked at BCB and GBEA and have attached in the, to the packet, which unfortunately I'm not able to pull up right now, but the reviews. So do we, should, how would you, Madam President, how would you recommend we proceed reading the attachment for the edits that were discussed in the subcommittee?
Yeah, maybe you could give us some characterization of, of the nature of the changes. I, I trust that people have had the opportunity to look at their packet or will do so much more closely. But if you wanted to just give a summary?
Yeah, so in the BCB, we, what we did was I, we discussed different communities and how they treat their conflict of interest policy. And we reworded it using some language from neighboring communities. The majority of our neighboring communities did permit employment of family members and just deferred to the law, the Massachusetts law, to address any conflict of interest. So what is in the package, the reworded policy reflects a lot of captured language from the neighboring communities.
Okay.
And the subcommittee did vote in favor of, of that, of changing.
Okay, and then on GBEA, also it looks like there's one paragraph?
Yeah, on GBEA, what we did was we tweaked that to only reference staff. And we removed the reference of school committee family members just to the point of that it, it isn't addressing the employment of school committee in that language, only staff. And that was also passed to recommend the changes to the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Thank you for that report out. So the next step would be to bring this forward for a second reading at our, what I intend to be our May meeting. So please do take some time to consider the alternate language that's been presented from our Policy Subcommittee meeting. And we'll make our decision at that next meeting. I don't think that the Policy Subcommittee had any additional meetings since we last met. I know that.
We have not. That was the last meeting.
Yeah, we have intentions to get on a regular schedule, but.
Yes, we, we did discuss that in the last meeting. That we, our plan was to meet in May. The next, we were going to pause in April, just in light of everything else going on. But then, of course, a lot more started going on. So, so what we're going to, my goal is to meet on a more regular base. We, we did discuss the routine of reviewing policy and kind of farming it out to the applicable subcommittees for review and, and doing that on a more scheduled basis.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And the last agenda item we have this evening is our regular communication for, from school committee members. We left off community engagement because I think most of us have been at home. And I would open the floor if anyone had communications from constituents, parents, et cetera. Looking for hands? Ms. Visnick?
I think we talked about a lot of the things that I have heard from people about, in particular, the April vacation, the different types of learning, the consistency across the learning, the, when, when would we get back on track, which we really talked about at our last meeting, and the fact that April 6th was the, the selected date. I think as a general rule of thumb, we covered it fairly well last meeting when we talked about. Some people are still very much struggling. And despite the fantastic efforts and all that we have available, it's still very difficult for some people to try to help their children get through the remote learning while also trying to juggle their own day jobs, where they too are trying to work from home. And in particular, if nothing else, share the bandwidth. That's my own personal struggle with four other people in my household now, all trying to, three of whom are trying to do remote learning and somebody else is trying to do remote work as well. So all those types of things, I've heard from a handful of people on, on kind of each of those different topics. And I'd like to give a huge shout out. There's a particular teacher of Mr. Ian Samuel Visnick, who hand-delivered a card. And it just, you know, when you realize how much the teachers are going above and beyond, despite, despite the struggles that some people are having, right? For my son to get a piece of mail and, and open it up and, and read from one of his teachers, just kind of, hi, how are you doing? Let me know if I can do anything to help you. That is exactly what makes our community a fantastic place to live, even when we're all stuck inside. So I, I want to tip my cap. That, that teacher knows who she is. And certainly did not do it for me to go on camera and say her name out loud. But she got a thank you note from us. And it is just something that I think everybody should know. That's one example of something that's happening. And it's unprecedented. So we appreciate that.
Sure. Do I have another committee member? I'll call myself then. I've definitely been getting a lot of questions about April vacation. I'm glad we've addressed that this evening and given some clarity to parents and some structure for our students. Also seeing lots of questions come about, are we done for the year? And I keep deferring to the fact that the governor has said only through May 4th. I'm very optimistic. There's questions from constituents about our budget process, about our remote meetings, about how we are going to continue to incorporate the public comment portion of our regular meetings. And of course, for the budget process. And that's a work in progress. We're trying very hard to understand what the platform will allow us to do in terms of additional participants or allowing the public. participants, or allowing the public to have their comment period. That's something we really will endeavor to have in our future meetings. Question came anonymously to me. I think it was sent with some good intention. I think there's another member who also received it, questioning whether any of our hourly employees are eligible for unemployment. That's a good question. I don't think that our employees are necessarily set up the same way that, you know, a, a normal employee is set up. But a normal, meaning, commercial or in, in, in business. I had some parents reach out with concerns about some of the content that's delivered in our applications. I did refer that to the superintendent. Also, for the parent, I referred it directly to the classroom teacher and/or principal, since it was a grade level assignment. And I just want to echo some of what Ms. Visnick said. I'm certainly seeing a lot of YouTube awesomeness from our leaders at the building level, whether they're, they're grade level leaders. I think I would encourage all of us to go out and check some of the things that are coming out of the Beverly Middle School, Mr. Melanson, Mr. Conan, a lot, a lot of good stuff out there, to help keep our spirits high, and, and see how our staff are really caring and reaching out to our students. I think the, the montage of all the, the teachers was really heartfelt, and a welcome way to start this week. And the parody videos are just hilarious. So please take some time to enjoy some of the levity that our teachers are, are offering. With that, there any other? Oh, Mayor Cahill, I see your hand.
Thanks, Madam President. I, I, excuse me, I appreciate everything that you and Mrs. Visnick just said, and, and would just echo. Lots of wonderful things that our, that our great educators are doing. I do want to say, you, you touched on budget. On a conference call with the administration, the governor, and lieutenant governor, and crew, recent conference call with mayors, it just, it occurs to me that there is so much uncertainty around the revenues, and, you know, when do we really get back to work? Does it, does it come all at once, or is it in, you know, kind of in stages? Is it uninterrupted once we do get back to, you know, to, to regular commerce? So I, I wouldn't be surprised if our budget season does not happen. And we're, we're already kind of backed up in a, in a sense. But it wouldn't be shocking if we end up doing a 112 budget in July, in July, and conceivably even another one in August, while the governor and the legislature are trying to get a handle on what to expect for revenues going forward. So, you know, not ideal, but it may play that way. Of course, I could be entirely wrong, and we could be doing our budget together in a month's time. But, you know, just, I, I know that they're really uncertain as to what to expect, given that everything is shut down now, but for quote essentials, and it's just hard to know how things will roll back out. Just thought I'd share that. Thanks. Madam President, you're muted.
I was asking Ms. Coelho if she had her hands up. I thought I had seen it. No, she's, yes, there we go. Go ahead.
Yes. So I've had constituents come to me with all the emails. I'm overwhelmed with all the emails. Why do we have so many emails? And, you know, I refer to them that they have several different teachers. All these teachers are helping out, trying to make sure they keep in contact with every child. They have a bigger job now than they did before. You can't, it's easier to handle a class when it's in one room versus all these separate children and all these separate emails. So it's a huge kudos to them for being able to have this all well organized. Parents with kindergarten payment questions, and I referred two of them to sue. Two of them I were able to answer on my own with Ms., with Dr. Chroix's help. And to piggyback on Madam President and Lurinda, I have to say kudos to my son's kindergarten teacher. She handmade, she handmade all these cute little notes for the kids and sent them out. She's been doing individual Zoom meetings so she can have one-on-one with each student, and it makes them feel so good that they can see their teacher that they miss so much. And that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Coelho. Do I see any other hands? Communications, school committee members? Going once, going twice? Okay. I think that brings us to the point of the evening where I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ferretti. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Malady. Motion in a second at 8:35 PM. Oh, we did much better than that last call. I was shocked at the time. But a lot of good information. We will do our roll call vote. Karen Robinson. Yes, I saw, I can lip read now. Mr. Malady? Yes. And Lurinda Visnick?
Yes.
Thanks. Ms. Coelho? Yes, lip reading again. Kelly Ferretti, fell off my screen. There you are, on the left. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Cahill?
Yes, and please stay healthy, everybody.
Oh, thank you as well. And Rachel Abel, yes. Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thank you Bev Cam for broadcasting this. I hope the transmission was much cleaner than our last go-round, but I am going to keep a copy here for you just in case. Be well.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.